Good evening, and welcome to the Town of Kipsey's only Board of Appeals October 2024 meeting. If you'll all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Christine?
Here.
Art?
Here.
Phyllis?
Here.
Tony?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
Tony?
Here.
We have one member missing tonight, so our alternate will be a full voting member. This is the, for any of you unfamiliar with the procedure here before the zoning board of appeals, there's an agenda up here. Each item will be taken in order that's on the agenda. The applicant will come forward, be sworn, describe their application. There may be some questions from the board. The public has an opportunity to speak. Likewise, they'll be sworn in. You can either appear in person, or on Zoom, or by phone. With that, let's start with item number one, 566 Vassar Road. Is there anyone here from that application? All right, I don't see anyone. It's 6:00 PM, so I'll put that on the second call. The next is item number two, but my recollection was that we already adjourned that to the May, to the March 10th, 2025 meeting. And next is number three, the shops at Campus Center, Mary Center. Okay, you're still under oath, but just state your name.
Brandon Petrella with Mori Architects.
Okay. So what's new?
So at our last meeting, we had discussed alternate options for the valance toppers on the gas station pumps themselves. Coming up with nothing smaller or less garish that I believe the board would like, the owner has elected to remove all signage. The valance has to remain to hide the mechanics behind it, but they will wrap it in white. So that variance is now off the table. The other two that are still outstanding would be the digital sign. No changes there. It's still our contention that the agricultural law requires us to have these minimum sizes. They're very similar throughout the town. And the other one would be the canopy itself, its sign. And again, I will just share my screen. Bear with me one second. Here again, the top is the current sign as it exists. The bottom is a conforming sign. We contend, you know, our tenant put it up without a permit, but he made a very minor mistake. It's not a large variance that we're asking for. And visually, I don't think it's that significant. It's 6%. So those are two variances, and otherwise, they haven't changed.
Do you have an idea of the cost of replacement to make it comply with the statute?
I asked the client, our tenant for that. I didn't get an answer besides several thousands of dollars. Because you're essentially throwing the sign out and redoing the entire thing.
The other, the other sign? What size is that?
The, which one? Just the V?
There are two signs, or two s-
Two canopy signs?
Yes.
Yes. So the one is the V. The V sign here is in conformance. The opposite side is the one that's in question.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
How much bigger is, is the one that's, is the existing? How much bigger is that as opposed to the one that would be conforming?
Yeah, let me just, so you can see here, this one that is existing, okay? It's 3'8" tall by 15, let's call it 15 and a half feet, okay? The one that would be conforming would be 3'4", so four inches shorter, and 13, let's call it 11, so close to 14 feet, and a foot and a half shorter. As far as square footage is, the permitted sign, which would be the one on the bottom again, is 46 square feet, is what's permitted. And we have a 56 and a half, 56.6 square foot sign. Again, it's 6% larger than what would be permitted.
Thank you.
And actually, I have this, if this helps the board. I mean, here's a, here's a comparison. This is what we have. That's what conforms. I mean, you can, it's extremely minimal, the difference.
Anything else?
No, that's all. Thanks.
Art?
I think it should be made standard. I mean, just because they put it up and they violated the signage standards, we have had other signs. In fact, one was just for the doctor on the former Arlington, that we were really pushing him to take it down a foot. So, you know, they, they put it up without any permits whatsoever. I would like to see it made to conform. And I find it hard to believe that Valero won't take that sign back.
They don't come from Valero. They come from a third party who prepares them. So that, he's going to eat that cost. And again, you're not wrong. You're 100%. But this isn't as simple as it's not, it's too high, or any of those things. I mean, this is complete replacement. And it doesn't change the fact that he did things without permits, but I will say he is, it's been kind of pulling teeth with him, but he is trying to correct things by removing the valances and things like that. So trying to sort of meet in the middle with the town code. I mean, there's not a single gas station in the town that doesn't have their name on their valance. I showed you several photographs of that. You know, and I'm not saying that makes it right. I just, he was, him and his signage agency thought those were standards that they were okay with.
But they thought that without coming here?
I do not, no contention with that.
My problem is that the next company that does this and say, oh, well, gee, we didn't know, then here we go.
Art, they also have to pay a 50% penalty? When they apply for the permit, just so you know.
Phyllis?
Explain that again? I'm sorry, they have to pay-
For the sign permit, signs that are already existing have to pay 50% more?
Is that a significant additional cost?
What's the total square footage?
31.
56 point, well, for all of the signs? I mean, those, those two alone, I mean, he'd still have to get, he has to pay permits for all of the signs. We're at 56.6 for the one and 17.8 for the other. That's not even counting the monument signs that are still would be due, and I assume the digital signs as well.
So it would be a $140 penalty for one sign, for the large sign.
Could you remind me, please, of the change that he's taking? That, what the valance will look like without Valero on it?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is what he has today. Okay, so the Valero on the valance, that's just going to be completely gone, and it'll be wrapped in white. So this is what you would see. You'd just see these white bands that go around the pumps at the top. So the only signage you'll actually have on the pump at this point is this tiny Valero that you see down here.
Okay.
Which is permitted by code.
Thank you very much. No further questions.
And remind me again, what's the sign made up on the?
It's a metal illuminated with acrylic face. So it's built off the face.
Tony?
You may have said this, but when was that, the 6% sign, when was that installed?
I would say, when did we start this process? Five, six months, like immediately after the new ownership took over and got that tenant, which I think was six to eight months ago, at this point.
Within the last year?
Oh, yeah, within the year.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
You had shown this, the sign as it is now, and then you showed what it would be like. Is there any way you could have them, you know, side by side, or so you, so?
I mean, this is, this is that, this image. So this top one is the existing.
Okay.
The bottom one is what would be, and this is, again, to my point, the reason we're showing that is just to show the visual impact, which is, what is, I think is important to the town, is the visual impact of the sign, so it's not garish. I don't think what is actually permitted is visually that different from the larger sign.
Thank you.
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application, and if you would unshare your screen? All right, I don't see anyone in the, in the audience, anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? This is item number three on the agenda. All right, I don't, I don't see any response, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And again, I didn't mention this, but you can wait till the end of the meeting and to find out, or you can check with the zoning administrator in the morning.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number four, which was, has been withdrawn. So item number five, 24 Kinney Road. Is there someone here?
Hi, good evening.
State your name.
My name is Enrique De Paz. I'm the owner of 24 Kinney Road.
Mr. De Paz, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Excuse me? Sorry, I-
That's okay.
I got a bad, bad hearing, but go ahead.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Thank you.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Okay, I'm basically looking to get a variance on the front of the house to put a small porch in, in front of the house. Right now, it's, the variant, the property has, the porch would have to be 30 feet away from the property lot, from the line, and that would give me a four-foot porch on the, on the house. The drawing doesn't show. We have a bay window right there that sticks out about a foot and a half. So a four-foot porch, basically, not really an option. So the other choice would be to get a variance to allow us to move two feet closer to the, the line, the property line on the, on the front of the house, so we can get a six-foot porch on there. This is part of a complete renovation of the first floor of the house. Essentially, I'm making the first floor a, one, one-bedroom apartment for my wife and I, if we can stay in the house longer, not having to go up the stairs. Anyway, but, you know, I always wanted a porch. I fell in love with a porch 40, 45 years ago in my in-law's house, and I always wanted to do it. I should have done it when we added the second floor. We didn't do it back then. So now I'm, my wife's really into it. She really wants it, so, anyway. So that's, that's about it. That's all I'm looking for to do, is move it up, get two feet further, and so we can make a six-foot porch.
All right, and the diagram that you provided, that shows it only going to about half of the width of the house? Is that about, is that correct?
Yeah, the porch, the porch is less than half the house. With, yeah, I, I didn't want a big porch. Just enough to put like three chairs or something like that. The porch is all along that street, and as looking at those, I said, no, I want something quaint, small, low-pitched roof, all that stuff. Not something that's gonna basically catch, draw your attention to and overwhelm the house.
Okay, and is it covered?
Yeah, covered porch, yes. I'm thinking of doing a metal roof on it, porch only, for noise, like sitting in the rain. Anyway, okay, go ahead. That's, that's what I have.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions, sir.
Tony?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see one in the audience. Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application?
My neighbor did comment across the street. She said I should have gotten an eight-foot variance, because it's going to take her too long to walk over to my porch and have her coffee. Just kidding, just kidding, we're good. Sorry, she's fine.
All right, did you get, Sonya, did you get anything from any of the neighbors? No? All right, I don't see anyone on Zoom, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And again, you can wait till the, till the end of the evening, or find out tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number six, 39 Hagan Drive. Is there someone here from, okay, I see you on Zoom.
Greetings.
Okay, just state your name.
I'm Andrew Davison, along with Sahara Pradhan, who's here. We're co-owners of House 39 Hagan Drive. That's our little baby.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, why don't you describe the application?
We had an old, we bought the house a little over two years ago. We had an old dilapidated deck on the back outside the window here, and we wanted to replace it. The deck was along the side of the house, at a measurement of 13.5 feet from the neighbor's property. That will remain the same, except we want to extend it in the other direction, which is about 100 feet at least from the next neighbor's property below us, by about a foot, maybe two at most. And want to move in, want to extend it towards the middle of the house by about six feet, far away from the neighboring property. We applied and learned of the law regulating the question of the variance, and so I'm here tonight to petition your committee to waive it so that we can put a good deck on the back of the court, back of the house.
Okay, is it fair to say that it doesn't encroach any further into the side lot line than the current house? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and how, how far from the ground will it be? How high off of the ground?
I don't think I know that measurement. We have a basement underneath us.
Okay. So is it one foot, or five feet, or? The land goes down a little bit, right, behind your house?
Probably eight, yeah, the land goes down. If you're in the front of the house, you only see one floor. In the back of the house, you see the basement. And so we're on the first floor, and the deck will be on the, even with the first floor. So probably about eight, seven, eight feet.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment? All right, I don't, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That brings us to item number seven, 11 Pine Berry Court. All right, just state your name.
Carly Coran.
Ms. Coran, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
We are looking to put an addition on my residence behind the current garage and allow for my daughter, her three-year-old, as well as her fiance, to be living on the upper level, and then my mother, hopefully later, but at some point, 82, would be living on the lower level within the next few years. So we're looking to have a variance of six feet on the side of the garage that would allow the addition to extend out slightly.
So, based upon the diagrams that you provided, and a review of the property, is it fair to say that your property is sort of a high-shaped sort of thing? It's narrow in the beginning, it goes out to the back?
Very similar to that, correct.
And, and based upon the diagrams that you provided, it appears to me that the addition will actually be farther away from the side lot line than the current, than the garage is from the side line, side lot line? Is that correct?
Yes, it will be further away. The garage currently is closer to the property line than the addition will be.
Okay, and the addition will be at the same height as the existing roof? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, those are all questions I have. Tony S.
Okay, just, so basically, if I remember your property correctly, it's only that one corner that's, that's really going to require that much of a variance, right? Just the first, the front?
Correct, right on the, if you're looking at the home to the right side.
It gets, it gets wider as you go back.
Correct.
How far out is that supposed to extend, past the garage?
If you look at the addition, it's going to be, well, it'll be 14 feet from the property. It's hard to tell, because our yard, I mean, it's going to, it's going to expand
Yeah.
at a diagonal. But right now, we would be looking at 14 feet from the property line.
You're currently what, 20? I'm just guessing. I, I looked, but I didn't measure or anything.
Well, it-
There was a survey there, Tony.
Yeah, there's a survey, I saw the stakes, yeah, I saw the stakes.
Right, but because it, because it flares out on the side, the garage, the property line is closer to the garage than it will be to the addition.
So I'm just curious about the distance you want to extend off of the garage, that's all. Your, your, your diagrams don't, don't give a dimension, that's the only reason.
So it looks like about nine feet that it extends past the, the back of the garage.
Okay, and is it, is that extension flush with the front of the garage?
Tony, do you have this?
I have it, yeah.
Yes, it, it will sit the same direction that the garage, if that's what you're asking, the garage doors, the extension will come out.
Yeah.
Yes. So inevitably, like 90 degrees.
It's set back from the, from the garage, is what you're saying.
Yes, it's really going to sit tucked behind the garage.
Okay, all right, I see it. Okay, all right, well, thanks. That's the only clarification I needed.
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
All right.
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see one in the, anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom?
I think it's just my daughters on there.
Does she, does she want to say something?
Tristan?
Hi, sorry, my son is currently having a meltdown. Yes, so it would just be-
Just state your name.
Oh, sorry, Tristan Coran.
Tristan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, now go ahead.
So it is just the addition to the back of the garage, in the order to hold myself, my three-year-old son, and my fiance.
Okay. All right. And again, if there's anyone else who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And that brings us to item number eight, 9 LaGrange Avenue.
Hello again.
You're still going to tell the truth, right?
I will.
All right, and just state your name.
Brandon with Mori Architects.
Okay, what's this application about?
So this application was before you, I believe, a year ago. And I'll share my screen again. I'm not sure if all the board members were here at that time.
It was actually a couple of years ago.
Two, you're right, it was 2022, that's right.
Time flies.
Too fast. So what has happened since this time? Two variances were granted at that time for a garage structure on the rear of the lot. The lot is located here on LaGrange Avenue, just off of Raymond. So it's this dotted line that you see here. There's an existing residence here that we converted into an apartment building as part of this project. Construction's actually almost completely done. You can see the finished results now, if you drive by the site. What the owner is working on now is, what was done was, there was a garage proposed in the rear of the property here. If you look closely here, there was an old garage that was located where this dotted line is. At some discussion during the planning phase, it was decided that in order to get an appropriate amount of parking spaces and maneuverability on the lot, that we, since we were going to, this was in a poor state, it was getting demolished anyway, we had originally proposed to build it back in place. What we did was, we proposed to build it back here, in conjunction with discussions with the planning board, to give us backup space and get us a little bit further away for proper maneuverability in the parking area. When we did that, we had gotten a rear yard variance for the five foot off the property line, and then we also actually moved it off of this property line a little bit and changed it to three feet. At this time, what was originally considered, the owner wanted to get an apartment on the second floor of this building. Obviously, parking being tight, we abandoned that idea. The owner is now currently quite involved in the town, buying parcels. He's trying to buy additional parcels and gain additional parking. So what we're looking to do at this point is construct the two stories, use it as his storage space for the maintenance of his properties currently. No changes to the actual site layout. We're actually speaking with the planning board and the, and the utility departments and actually putting in the utilities for everything that we'll need in the future. But what he'd like to do is raise that now to a two-story structure in Louisville One. So again, the variances would be the exact same variances that they were previously, except it's a two-story structure in Louisville One. No apartments are proposed at this point until we find parking. So we're not asking for a parking variance of any sort.
Has anything else changed in, other than the height, other than the second story, has anything else changed?
Footprint's exactly the same, everything is similar about it. Two, two parking stalls were originally proposed, they're still proposed. Excuse me. So you'll still have the same six parking spots on, on the site. It's just going to be second floor storage at this time.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
The second floor, will you be putting in utilities at this point?
We are putting, so what's being put in currently is the building will require a sprinkler, uh, because it's a, what's considered a public garage above an apartment. So it has to have a full sprinkler system. And it also is going to have sewer brought to it at this time. So that's all that'll be in there at this, well, electric laws will be brought to it at this point. But nothing upstairs as far as fit up at this time is proposed. And that obviously will be handled at the building department level as well to make sure that there is no kitchens or dwelling units put up there. That's not our intent. It's just to try to get ahead that if we ever do get the parking and have the ability to put an apartment up there, the services are there.
Okay, thanks. Phyllis?
On Sunday, we went out and it looks like it's a very wooded lot for, you know, where it is. Will you be replacing? Do any trees have to come down in order to build the second story? And if they do, will you be replacing them?
So what you see on the lot now, actually, the footprint of that building exists. They put the foundation in for the garage already. So everything that's on the site is done. There will be no further clearing for it, you know, unless there's maintenance vegetation that needs to get cut. But no other site changes need to happen. The footprint is already in, the foundations of the structure are already in the ground.
Thank you, I have no other questions.
The planning board, does it have any concerns?
No, I mean, they've been very forthcoming about their intentions. They understand the situation with parking. And, you know, like, uh, like you said, you know, they're, they're looking at options on maybe adjoining properties. And if that were to happen in the future, it seems like it makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Tony?
No further questions.
No questions.
Tony?
And no questions.
Okay. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? And I don't see anyone there, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, have a wonderful evening.
Okay. That brings us to item number nine, thirty-three Schoolhouse Lane.
Boardman Road.
Oh, did I skip one?
Sixty-three Boardman Road.
I, well, mine is
Thirty-three Schoolhouse.
The one I have is number differently, okay, then.
What is, what do most of you have? Thirty-three Schoolhouse.
Yeah, I do thirty.
I got Boardman Road, I win.
There are two versions of the agenda, too.
What's that?
There were two versions of the agenda.
Two versions of the agenda, all right.
The one that got sent in the packet has
What's the one that's here?
This one is
You're from Boardman Road?
Correct.
Okay. We'll do Boardman Road.
Boardman's here.
All right, why don't you state your name?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff, Frank Filichoto, owner of sixty-three Boardman Road.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
It is, yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Sure, thank you. Here before you this evening to request a variance of six inches on a proposed split rail fence in the front yard of our property. Town call, town code calls for a max height of forty-two inches to the top rail. The one we're proposing is forty-eight inches, uh, so it's six inches over. Just the reason for the fence is my wife and I, uh, have a three-year-old daughter. We'd like to just provide a little bit of a buffer between our, our yard, our front yard and the street. We believe there's a few mitigating factors here which would justify the variance. Number one, we're proposing to put the fence thirteen feet back from the roadway, so it will not be in a sightline. Number two, where the, the fence is proposed is actually about a foot lower than the roadway elevation itself. So, uh, that one foot difference essentially neutralizes the six inches that we're over in terms of the, the code requirement. And then just from a safety perspective, the three-rail fence that we're proposing provides tighter spacing of the rails. They're about eleven inches between as opposed to the two-rail fence, which while shorter, uh, is fifteen inches in between the rails. So, um, that's essentially our proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are you going to provide anything, like netting or anything on the inside or outside of the fence?
No, not, we're not envisioning that, no.
Okay. And did you, is there a reason you picked a split rail fence rather than something like a three-and-a-half-foot weight picket fence?
We wanted it to be as, as unintrusive as possible. There, there aren't any of those sort of opaque fences in the neighborhood. There are a few split rail fences. We felt that it, we liked the aesthetic, we felt that it was in keeping with what exists in the neighborhood. We're not looking to, to provide that kind of wall look. We just wanted a barrier so that if the soccer ball goes a little bit off, off, uh, off direction, there's a barrier there for the person. And the split rail would achieve that.
And I, I think you may have misconstrued the code. I don't think we measured just at the top rail, uh, but I think we'll try and get around that.
We, I was pretty forthcoming in the application that the
You were amazingly forthcoming.
That the, the height is fifty-four. But the variance, the petition that I saw when I received the notice called for forty-two versus forty-eight. So that's why I, I represented that tonight. But you're correct, the top, uh, the height to the top of the post is fifty-four inches, not forty-eight.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
Just to follow up on your question, um, and I don't know if it would make a difference, but well, he's right, the split rail fence is a lot more pleasing to the eye than the white plastic fence, but
Actually, I was thinking of weight picket fence, not a white plastic.
It's a split rail, so it's still prettier. If in the future, and I'm asking, I think Lisa mainly, if they chose that they would have to put it maybe in netting up to the second rail or, you know, second rail to keep the child from possibly squirming through, is that something they would have to come back for? Since it's a, a net type?
It's not part, I mean, it's not above the, any height fencing, so
So it could be done with, no, it could be done with them, okay.
Correct.
Just curious.
I have no questions, thank you.
Tony?
No questions.
No questions.
Tony?
Uh, no questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see one, any, anyone on Zoom? All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Now thirty-three Schoolhouse Lane.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, I'm Patrick Hinkley, I reside at thirty-three Schoolhouse Lane.
Mr. Hinkley, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Why don't you describe your application?
Yes, I'd be glad to. I want to thank you, uh, for reviewing my application for a special use permit. Uh, as you know, it's, uh, for honeybees in the town of Poughkeepsie. I live in a residential zone and I don't have the acreage allowing, uh, agricultural use. So I'm looking forward to, uh, receiving your okay. Uh, essentially, I've recently retired and I'm looking for a hobby. And, um, my end game here is the honey. I don't intend to sell the honey. I expect to use it for my own personal use and for the use of my friends and family. I won't receive any economic benefit from the honey. I know that the bees will certainly, uh, be benign and quite beneficial. I'm not a fanatic about, um, pollinators and although I strongly believe it's important, I'm not here to preach that. I did find out on the internet though, on Google, that eighty percent of all flowering plants, which include fruits and vegetables, are reliant on honeybees for pollination. So, um, it's I, uh, with that said, I, I hope that you would look favorably upon my application.
Can you educate us a little bit about beekeeping?
Beg your pardon?
Can you educate us a little bit about beekeeping? So, first of all, are you a member of any clubs or how'd you get interested in this?
I'm, how did I get interested? Well, I, I enjoy a nice cup of tea with honey, so. I'm not in any clubs as of yet. I have done some reading about beekeeping and, um, it's kind of simple. Give them water and food in the fall so they can winter over and, you know, you just let nature take its course.
Okay. And how many and what type of hives were you considering?
That's a really good question, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
No, thank you.
Beg your pardon?
Thank you.
I expect one hive to begin with, which is a standard, it's called a Langsford, uh, hive. It's a standard size. I will use two chambers, so it probably won't stand much over two feet. It might be twenty-six inches. So put it on a cinder block or two cinder blocks, so that'll raise it to eight inches, which takes it to just over six, just over two feet. What was your other question, please?
I think you answered both of them, what, what type and how many?
Oh, right, I'll start with one hive. My application is for two hives. I want to see how it goes. The first year is supposed to be the, the pivotal year. And once you get through the first year, then I think I'll be able to, uh, support the second hive.
And have you spoken with any of your neighbors about your plans?
I have talked to a few of my neighbors. No one has anything negative, uh, to say. I know one of my neighbors is on Zoom right now, so she may have been put, but, um, I haven't had any negative, uh, response.
Okay. So, help me understand a little bit about how urban beekeeping can survive? You know, I understand typically our code requires five acres of property for animal production.
For some reason, the bees are categorized as an agricultural animal. And that's, I guess, state and federal. I don't know any nursery rhymes where the farm animal says buzz buzz, but, um, I really don't see the bees being a, uh, hindrance to the neighborhood.
Okay. Are you familiar with any other local beekeepers?
Local?
Beekeepers?
I know, I've seen hives around, I don't know any of them personally, but I expect, you know, once I get going, I'll have questions and I'll seek out, you know, people that have experience.
Okay. And you know you have to register with the Department of Agriculture?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, say that again?
You have to register your hives with the Department of Agriculture?
Yes.
You knew that?
I will do that.
No, you knew it? Did you know it?
No, I didn't know it, but I know now.
All right. All right, that's, I think that's all I have right now. Christine, do you want to ask any questions?
I think you've answered all of my questions, thank you.
The, the bees that you're bringing in, they're just the standard honeybees that, because there's so many bee types around now, you know, that people are afraid of getting stung with this.
There are many different, uh, species of the bees, so I'm not going to get the African killer bees or any of that sort.
So the ones you're getting are pretty docile, they're the ones you see
They're very docile.
Flying around your yards, sitting on the clover and stuff like that. And it really takes a lot to aggravate them to do you any harm, if you will, or you have to Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Phyllis?
Will you have to have a fence around the hive? Like if, if some kid's ball goes in your yard and they go after the ball, is that a danger to the child or the bees?
Well, I did actually speak with my next-door neighbor who does share the property line and she is not concerned about the bees and her son is not allergic to bees. Bees, the bees are very docile, they, you know, you, I'm sure you've heard, they won't bother you if you don't bother them. That's what all the literature says, uh, that I've read. So I don't, I've never heard of putting a cage around it and I really don't see that as an issue.
Thank you, I have no other questions.
Okay. Tony?
About how many bees would, you said one this year, two next year, about how, for one hive, about how many bees would that?
That's a really good question, it varies. There could be a couple hundred bees in one hive.
That's all I have.
You had, you had mentioned that you were no club memberships and you've just done reading and that it was pretty simple, but, um, I'm wondering, have you done research and do you know about the different types of diseases that bees can carry and share with, with bees who are not part of your hive and how you really need to be diligent? It's not just about having the bees fly around.
Excellent question. I have done some reading. I haven't joined any clubs or any of that nature because I wanted to see if I would be approved first. But I, the reading I have done does talk about the, uh, disease in the hive and there are recommendations on how to mitigate that, so, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and are you planning on putting any sort of fencing? You know, in front of the hives?
I do not plan on that. I think that was what Ms. Capone had asked.
Okay, um, well, she said in general, but I meant, you know, in front. Are, are you, do you know what direction you're going to face your hives as far as north, south, east, west?
That's a good question. I'm going to put them on the southern, on the northern boundary line, so probably their entrance will be facing south. I'm not sure that's the, the best for them, but that's the best that fits my property.
So having it there as they come and go out of their hive, are they going towards neighbors' properties? Or how far, how far will that be from neighbors' properties?
Well, I'm not sure what any set that requirements there, there are, but if there are, I would, I would adhere to that.
It's not a requirement, it's just
I would probably put it, you know, a foot or two near the property line. I really don't know what they're, I know they're really excellent flyers, so they could probably fly in any direction. I don't know which way they're going to go.
But how close is the nearest home? As far as would you say that in, in the direction, assuming that you put the, the hive here and they fly this way?
If they fly directly to the, directly at the house, probably fifty, seventy-five feet.
Okay. All right, um, and you, you're not thinking of expanding beyond the two hives?
Two is all I'm interested in.
Thank you, no further questions.
Tony?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions at this time.
When, when typically, would you introduce the hive in the fall or winter or wait till spring?
Excellent, yeah, the springtime. So I'll be setting up, getting ready if I'm approved, uh, this winter and the spring they'll, I'll populate it.
And is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anyone in the audience, is there someone on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself.
Do you know the name of the person that you thought, you expected?
It was Degin Wall. She's on the, I see her name, but was that, what was your question?
Yes, if that's, if, if you could identify who, who you thought was going to comment.
I saw her earlier, but I
You could ask her to unmute and if she doesn't want to, that's fine as well. Okay.
Ms. Wall, if you wanted to comment on this application, if you hit the hand up button or unmute yourself?
Could you hear us?
Okay. So, um, I would like to hear more information. I, I understand that urban beekeeping is a big deal, but our code is pretty restrictive in it as it currently stands. So I, I would like to get some more information about beekeeping in suburban setting. So if you can provide either through live testimony or through documents or other sorts of information, uh, I would appreciate that. And because you said that you're not, you're not in a big hurry, I'm going to suggest that we adjourn this till next month or the month after, whichever is easier for you. In fact, I suggest we'll adjourn it to the next month and if you need more time, you can just In fact, I suggest we'll adjourn it to the next month, and if you need more time, you can just let us know.
What sort of information are you looking for?
So I would like to hear from other beekeepers, other suburban beekeepers, to explain what sort of problems they had, what sort of interaction they had with neighbors, whether in fact there is any danger in, in suburban beekeeping. I would like, I would like to hear from experienced beekeepers in that regard, either through whatever documents you can provide or if you find, you know, if you reach out to a local beekeeping organization and they're, they're willing to either appear by Zoom or in person and describe and help us understand how this fits into the suburban setting.
And would be in a narrative form or?
So the documents, of course, would be in narrative, but I would appreciate ability to question somebody.
So you would like me to bring in a known beekeeper with me?
If, if it's available. I mean, if you can't find anybody, you can't find anybody. But I'm assuming that within the beekeeping community, you will find some pollinator person that would be happy to come forward and explain things to us.
I understand.
I mean, if that's, if that's agreeable to everyone?
I thought I saw hives at the cider mill. I'm not sure if that's true or not. I thought I saw them to the north side.
I have an intention to reach out. There's a registration through, through New York State. I saw, it occurred to me too late to reach out to see what registered apiaries there are in Dutchess County.
An apiary is different from a hobby beekeeper?
They're not. Well, every one has to register. Every beekeeper has to register.
Right. The other place you could look is Plan B Brewery in the town. They keep bees and they use their honey in their products, so they may be willing to come talk about their hives. But there's a couple of options.
So will, am I automatically put on next month's agenda or how does that work?
You can, you can, I'm suggesting it. You can, you can say no, in which case we will vote tonight. And I don't know how well it'll go for you. Or my suggestion is that you...
I'm not apt to say no to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then, then my suggestion is that, my suggestion is that we adjourn it for a month for you to be able to provide some additional information.
My question is how do I get on next month's agenda?
I will, if we adjourn it, it will be on the next month's agenda.
Okay, automatically.
All right, very good.
Okay. If that's agreeable to everybody on the board. Anybody have any problem with that?
Can I ask a question though, for my sanity? I'm sorry. Why do we have five acres just because they're considered a...
Well, typically it's, well...
It falls under the category of agriculture.
It's farm animals. So it's pigs and cows and things like that.
Right, I understand that.
And bees are, under the state and federal law, they're considered farm agricultural products.
Really?
Yeah. And it's also...
We could address the code in the future, but currently that's where we are.
And it's also for, you know, commercial beekeeping, like apiaries and things that you might not want on our 20 lot, so.
Okay. Thanks. In that case, I'll move to adjourn this to...
Okay. Did you get my email? There was...
Uh, yes.
I have one other question. I feel I'm on.
Before we do that, there was one comment from a neighbor who was objecting to it because they have a bee allergy. So that's in the record, although so far as I know, they didn't put anything in writing or...
Uh, I put it, I put the emails.
I have the, yes, I have.
That was from me. They, they called me on the telephone and they said they don't know how to email.
They don't have email?
They don't know how to email.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, a minute ago, John had a hand raised.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, I, I, can you hear me?
Yes, John. Why don't you state your name?
Yeah, I mean, this is, I'm, I'm actually here for the next application, but I happen to have bees on my property. I live in the city of Beacon, so.
Okay, so.
John?
Okay, John, why don't you state your name?
Uh, John Moss.
Mr. Moss, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Sure. Yes, I do.
All right. What would you like, what are your comments?
Uh, I just, I wanted to, you were asking about beekeepers in urban settings, and I live in the city of Beacon, and I have a beehive next to my driveway, and you can ask me questions about it if you want. I don't do much with it, but they're there. They're kind of nice to read a book next to. I don't know if I can help you or not. I wasn't going to comment, but then I saw you were looking for somebody to actually who has bees to comment in an urban setting, and that sounds like me.
Okay. So how long have you had your hive?
Uh, about two and a half years.
Okay. And one or two hives or more?
Just one.
Okay. And how big is your lot?
Um, actually, I have an acre and a half, but it's a long narrow one. But yeah.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's a much bigger lot.
How close would you say your next neighbor is to the hives, hive?
Um, maybe a couple hundred feet. But the hive is about fifteen feet from our driveway that we walk up every day. Just in terms of proximity to people, if someone's nervous, they're nervous, but they're actually kind of nice to have around. They're no more dangerous. I think if you get within a couple feet, especially if you have perfume on or you've been drinking, I wouldn't advise that. Because they'll smell it. But, uh, you know, day by day, fifteen feet away, they're just like bees anywhere. They, I don't think they really register someone being close to their hive unless you're really close.
Okay. And are you a member of any club?
I'm sort of like... I'm sorry?
All right. Are you a member of any beekeeping club?
I am not. I know there's a, a local beekeeper here that we talk with, because she's a friend. Uh, but it's not a club. It's just a person.
Okay. And have, have you had any problems with your bees?
No, they're nice. Um, we don't even have them for honey. We just wanted to have pollinators around. So we haven't actually opened the hive.
All right, and...
And do their thing.
Did you have a discussion with any of your neighbors before you decided to set up the hive?
My neighbor gave it to us. Well, he, it was given to him and he didn't have enough space on his property. He didn't, his, his daughter didn't want it next to his. And he had a much smaller lot. And he said, could I have it on my lot? And I said, sure. I like bees. And yeah. It hasn't been an issue. I don't know if any, all of my neighbors actually know that we have bees and...
That's interesting in itself, so.
Yeah. So that, that may be a, a thing that we didn't, I don't know if Beacon's code, maybe it does classify them as farm animals. I didn't know. It did.
And are you registered? Is your hive registered?
No, I didn't know that that was a thing. And I don't know if my neighbor, my neighbor may have registered them because they were just relocated to our lot. So I, I don't know if technically they're my bees. They're just next to my driveway.
Okay. All right. And you have another question, Mr. Chairman? Did you?
Yeah, I, excuse me, I had a question about the area variance. Do I, am I still, do I need an area variance?
That's actually my question for the attorney. In order to approve the special use permit, the new variance, does he need to make a new application or are we just going to incorporate that into the whole thing?
It would be helpful. So a variance application, there are five standards that the board should consider. So it would be helpful if you would provide the board with information, which is in the application. I don't know that, that's really a, a town question as to whether he needs a separate application. I think what the board would benefit from is the analysis of the five factors.
Is that online? Do I, can I download that?
Yeah, on the town's website.
That was all my, that was all I have. Now, do you still want me to come back next month, Mr. Chairman?
I did, I actually, yeah, I'd like to hear from some other people.
Okay.
Yes.
Can we ask the other gentleman? I know it's very unusual.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So question to John?
Yeah, sorry.
Have your bees ever gone after anybody that's walked? I know you said with perfume etc., but have you ever had the instance where the bees become aggravated and actually go on after anyone?
No, they did swarm last year, and then our friend went and took them. It was kind of cool, but uh...
Right, but a swarm is typical. They're going to do that looking for a new hive.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, it's mainly because we don't take the honey out, which we should. So we just get too...
Okay, thank you.
Too much. But no, they never gone after anybody.
No, I didn't think so. Honeybees are pretty quiet. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I do, actually. John, so you don't do anything with them as far as, you know, using smoke, taking them out, cleaning the, the hive or anything like that?
We really, no, I, I don't. I should, I basically, I read a book next to them in the summertime because it's kind of nice to hear them. They're working, I don't have to.
And have you had more than one event where they've swarmed?
Just one.
And is, do you have special equipment to deal with it when they swarm to get them?
We do. But I mean, I, I called an experienced beekeeper, our friend, she's called the Beacon Bee, who, uh, who took them. Or actually, I think she called a different friend of hers. There's a, there is a beekeeping network, which I guess we're informally connected to, but not as a formal club, just because we know the people.
Thank you, John.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any? Are you raising your hand?
No.
All right, then I'll, I'll move to adjourn this to, is it November eighteenth, next meeting?
Yes. I'll move to it. Second to that. All right, any discussion?
All those in favor, signal by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then I have item number eleven, eight twenty-five Main Street.
That's actually my...
John is the representative.
Yep.
John will be the representative.
John will?
Yeah, John will.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm, that's actually why I was here. So that was random. Uh, I don't know if I'm sharing my screens.
Not yet.
Why am I not seeing it shared? It's down there. I just can't read it. Uh, give me a second. I'm sorry. Move this up. And show that. Okay, can you see my screen?
Now we can, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So the application is for a variance for a sign because my client would like to reuse the existing, uh, existing signage base. It's a, it's in a non-conforming location. And it's, uh, the base, it's not with conforming materials. We aren't increased, we're decreasing the degree of non-compliance by putting in, the proposed sign will comply as a twelve square foot, uh, sign. It's just for the base, so we're making it better. We're hoping that, that we don't have to rebuild the whole thing and disturb the landscaping that's established and all those other kind of things. So that's, that's the intent. You can see the existing sign is this large oval thing. I don't have the square footage of it, but this is about four feet across, so it's probably about twice as big as it should be. And the proposed sign would just be a smaller rectangle that is twelve square feet or slightly under. And that's, that's the proposal.
Okay. And you're kind of limited in the area between the right of way and the front of the building, right?
Yeah, I mean, the building is actually less than twenty feet from the, from the right of way itself. Sort of see, this is not zooming, is it? You can sort of see on the survey that we're, we're at like nineteen and change. So yeah, we, we, we're not actually looking for any variance there because we're not changing it. It's just, just for the signage. But we, yeah, that's...
Okay. And for the applicant, why don't you state your name?
My name's Kenny Chen.
Mr. Chen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right. Um, I think if we were to grant these, the landscaping in the front of the building, are you able to maintain that?
Yes.
All right. Then that's the other question I have.
That's what I was going to ask about the landscaping. You're going to keep that?
Yes.
As is, okay.
Yeah, we don't touch it.
Thank you.
All right.
No questions.
Phyllis? No questions. Tony?
No questions.
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the, if you would, John, if you would unshare your screen, anyone from the audience who wants to comment on this application?
Give me a second. Oh, sure.
I can take care of it, actually. All right.
Okay. I, I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone on Zoom who wish to comment on this application? I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the call of hearing.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
So I got a second call, um, five sixty-six Vassar Road. Does someone hear from, from that application? So did you ever hear from, from them in regards to either withdrawing their application or submitting what we requested? All right. Then I'll move to adjourn this to the November eighteenth meeting for them for final opportunity and for the produce. For final opportunity to produce additional information. He's what?
No, he's here for something else.
Oh, for the...
For the presentation. For discussion.
All right. Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. We can, do you want to do the discussion or do you want to, or you want to do deliberation? Why don't we do the discussion?
Is there anything on this Springside?
Seven Springside Avenue? You'd state your name?
Hello, everyone. My name is Cameron Casera. I am here representing the design team, Turu Ilgan Architect, PLLC, and our client, Ms. Jessica Ramos. She said...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to swear you in.
Oh, yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. So my client, Jessica Ramos, said she would be here as well. She might be here in a minute or two, but we'll proceed in the meantime. So just to summarize our project, we have been in dialogue with the planning department and zoning, kind of informally this past summer, and we did a discussion last month with planning. And our proposal is a densification of a lot in Arlington Center District, Seven Springside Avenue. It's currently used as a single-family residential site. And we are proposing adding three additional dwelling units. And basically, we've been through many iterations at this point without official submission, and there are a few sticking points. One is the lot size and density of use. The other one is parking. And, um, you know, the, the mixed, we're, we're looking to use the mixed-use residential provisions and ATC zoning to allow for this densification or at least make the, the variances required less of an ask. So if you'll notice in this plan, there is a, an office commercial space, which would be occupied by the building owner, Ms. Ramos, for her therapy practice. So I was hoping that the provision of that commercial space could enable us to at least get a deduction on one of the dwelling units above it as per the ATC zoning mixed-use provisions. I'm, the subsection is escaping me right now, but basically, density deductions based off of commercial use on the ground floor. The residents above could be not included in the, the total number of dwellings used on the site. But basically, we wanted to discuss this with you to see kind of how... But basically, we wanted to discuss this with you to see kind of how zoning felt about it, because we had a very positive, um, kind of meeting with planning last month. So, before we move forward with our official application, we wanted to get a temperature check to see where you stand. So.
So, explain to me, um, how, how you consider, or how, your interpretation of why these fit into the multiple use?
Our interpretation is that the district permits mixed use. The neighborhood is already mixed use. There's an auto body shop across the street, so we don't see this as, uh, kind of out of character with the neighborhood. And really, the commercial space on the ground floor is primarily to, you know, maybe get a deduction on one of the residential units above, and if that's an issue, we're okay removing the commercial space and just keeping it residential. But the priority of the project is to have this, um, change of use to a multifamily site, and we're prepared to sprinkler the additions and provide kind of all the, the necessary fire readings and partitions. And, um, in terms of our parking strategy, we've, we kind of discussed this with planning where, uh, we're, we're, we're able to provide, uh, seven, seven spots on-site with the provision of this kind of, uh, leasing agreement with the city for the air, the parking spaces that, uh, bridge the lot line. And the way that the stack spaces would operate is they would be dedicated to an individual unit, so, uh, that family group would be able to coordinate parking, um, accordingly. So, that's why the parking spaces P three, four, and five have been pulled back so that you can pull into the garage spaces in front. So, P two and P five would be grouped together, and P one and P three would be grouped together for the same unit.
Okay, and why don't you describe the additional dwelling units?
Uh, the additional dwelling units would be, uh, two duplex units accessed through, from the, uh, second floor. There's a terrace that we're proposing. And you can see the access on the first floor plan, there are gonna be two exterior stair cores, um, and there, so those, those stair cores would give you access to two three-bedroom duplexes and one two-bedroom. So, basically, units two and three are the duplexes, and unit four is the two-bedroom.
Do you have an idea of the, the rental cost?
Uh, my client is a, uh, social worker, and she's actually trying to, uh, lease these places to, uh, women in need and their families. So, um, I know she's talked about potentially having some of the units be section eight. Basically, affordable housing is the goal, and housing for people in her community.
Um, okay. That's all the questions I have, right? Phil's? I'm sorry. Christine?
Are there other multifamily homes on that street?
There are. Um, kind of catty corner to this property, there's a relatively new construction that's, uh, I think two, two-family homes side by side, and they have, uh, I'd say an unorthodox parking situation as well that involves like kind of multiple stacks going back onto the lot, so it's not out of character with this neighborhood. And basically, this house was, um, at some point in the past, prior to my client's ownership of the building, divided into three apartments, um, which obviously is a common condition in the city. And our intention is basically to keep the existing house as a single-family dwelling with three floors and just add three additional units to the site that are all kind of code compliant. You know, providing more safe official housing, you know, in the neighborhood as opposed to these informal apartments.
Thank you.
Art?
Yeah, the, the parking that you're going to gain from the city agreement, do the what if, what if the city says you can't do it anymore?
Um, well, then I'd be coming back to you and saying, is it, yeah, I mean, this, this is a, a dead-end cul-de-sac with street parking. Obviously, in the winter, that presents an issue. But even in agreement where we say have one parking space per dwelling unit could help us out a lot in that case.
There is, so just, uh, why, some precedent for this. We did, um, the town did a, uh, similar parking arrangement for, I'm trying to remember the number of the building, but it was off on Main Street. Uh, and it, the re, the parking is in the rear, uh, and they needed to use some of the town right-of-way for, to create, uh, the, the parking there. And so they did a, uh, a formal, uh, lease arrangement with the town. It was approved by the town board. And so I would imagine something similar to that would have to be in place here for the parking to be recognized as official off-street parking.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, we typically require it to be something permanent.
And that was a, right, it's a permanent.
Right, so what they did with the town, I think, was a permanent, like a license agreement, because you can't alienate town property. But we have other situations where there may not be enough on-site parking, and we have like permanent lease, uh, deed restrictions or something, or lease agreements or whatever. So, it's not unusual to have, um, parking, but it, we'd have to see what the nature of the arrangement is with the city.
So, before we could approve this, we would have to know that, correct?
Right. Well, I assume that this would start at the planning board.
This would start at the planning board, and that would be one of the things that would have to be ironed out, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Phil's?
Will, um, the owner be living at the building?
Yes.
Will she be there?
Yeah, the owner and her family will be living in the current three-story.
In the house.
In the house, yeah.
I have no further questions.
Right, and so they offered to the board, uh, as you pointed out, um, the applicant appeared, uh, before the planning board in the September meeting, so you can review, uh, that, uh, presentation, if you like, for some additional information. And what, how long do you think, where are they in front of the planning board?
They have not submitted a formal application. They were there for a piece, informal discussion like this. Um, just because it is a little bit, it's a little different than, you know, it's not a big project, it's a small project, but it's, uh, you know, a little, it's creative, a little more, you know, frankly, it's a, it's a, uh, and, and so they wanted to take the temperature first of the planning board, and then the Z B A will require, you know, uh, at least a density variance if nothing else from, from the Z B A. And so just kind of getting a little feedback informally at this point was, you know, thought to be a good, a good step, so.
Tony?
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Okay, I have a couple of things. I took a pretty good look at that site when I went out there last week. For one thing, the, the building appears to be condemned at the moment. There is a, there is a sign, uh, up next to the door that was posted by the town dated twenty-twenty-two, and says that it's, you know, not suitable for occupancy. And also, you're also up on a little bit of a hill there, because you have a set of stairs coming up from the street to your front lawn and in this building, so I mean, um...
I can answer that question.
Okay, so, you're gonna make it, I guess you're gonna make it habitable, I guess is what the question is, right?
Okay, my name is Jessica Ramos. How are you, everyone?
I just wanted to swear you in, Ms. Ramos.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Yes, I am, um, the member of the LLC that bought the position, the, um, residence, Women of All Trades LLC, and I'm a social worker. And, um, what I see there is, um, ultimately, yes, doing the residence for now, but I would like in the future for that to become, um, a place where I will be housing women that are recovering from, you know, domestic violence and things of that nature. That's really what I, I would like to see happen with those, you know, residences that I would like to be able to, you know, do. Now, when it comes to the danger sign, I have that already done. It was according to, um, what happened was that the winter months, when I bought the house, right away in the first week of buying the house, the water meter broke, and the wa, and there was water all over. So then, um, the fire department had to come in and turn it off from the outside, because there was no way of turning it off. The fire department came, I, I got it fixed, and everything was set, the boiler was checked out, I sent all the paperwork and the emails to the past fire inspector. I never heard from him, he never, nobody ever came back, nobody ever, and then I see that there's a new fire inspector, but I did what I had to do, and I did, um, followed through, which is the only thing that he wanted was to make sure that the components, if any, was underwater, that nothing happened to the, um, boiler, and to make sure that everything was, you know, working properly and that it was safe. And that's the reason why the danger sign was placed.
All right, okay, so the date on the sign said it was placed sometime in twenty-twenty-two. I didn't write the date down, but I remember twenty-twenty-two.
The same month I, I purchased the property.
Okay, okay. So that's, uh, so you're aware of all of that, and it's just a question of making it habitable again, I guess, right?
Yeah, it has, it, it, it's, I did what I had to do, like I said, I sent the email out, um, to the past fire inspector, Fred, was it? That he's the one that placed that, um, um, sign. I had, um, communication with him, and then I was just waiting for him to lift that, and oh, and then I see a new fire inspector. So, I just, since we've been just working on getting everything together, I never thought anything of it. So I don't know what, uh, to do about that. Should I send the emails to the new fire inspector so he can see what I sent to Fred?
Yeah, well, fire inspector and/or building inspector.
Yeah, I would just call the building department.
Uh-huh.
They'll, they'll help you. It's the same office for both, uh, and they can help you out. And, you know, obviously, those things will be, have to be cleared up, uh, before any, you know, permits are, are issued, but it's, again, I think the intent here is to renovate.
Right. No, I think your intent is laudable. I think that's a great thing you want to do, it's just that, that part of it kind of stuck out for me, and of course, the parking in that area is atrocious.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, one other point I just wanted to, uh, raise with you, um, it looks like you want to extend, uh, your, uh, your patios and decks further, uh, than the end of the building right now, and, uh, there is a driveway for the, for the house at the end of the street, I took a walk up there, and that looks like that's, there's multiple, uh, people served by that particular driveway. Does your property go right up to the edge of their driveway, just out of curiosity?
Yes, according to, um, the survey, the land surveyor, my property actually extends to the beginning of their driveway, so we actually share a little bit of their driveway as part of my property as well.
Okay.
According to the, um, land surveyor. But, um, the, uh, the balcony, the, um, the deck that, that we're looking at, that goes across around the house, is actually still, um, you know, far away from the driveway, where it's not gonna impede the, um, entryway for the side, which is two houses that serve my two neighbors. You know, um, that's their driveway.
Yeah, you can see the, uh, the setback is about four feet, two inches.
Okay, all right. That's the only other question I have. Thanks, sir.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Anything else you'd like to say?
Um, I, I would just like to say that, um, being a, a, a woman, a woman, you know, um, trying to set something up where, a place that is in much need of residence and, um, much needs of, of programs, and being a social worker, I just want to really be able to set this plan ahead and, um, just to make sure that I am in the right track with my engineers and, and everything, for us to be able to service our community, and not only to do that, not because of, of the money or for anything that has to do with, um, you know, um, creating anything for my own self-worth, but because in my heart, as a social worker, this has been a dream of mine to be able to help women, women empowerment, and, and to be able to help families to move forward and provide housing to women that are, um, in transitioning from domestic violence to move forward. Yes, it's an LLC now, but I'm hoping to be able to, um, work out with the, um, social work office that I'm putting in the first floor, um, to get a, a nonprofit organization open, and to be able to transition those homes that right now are just, you know, basic homes, to be able to service my community in that way. So.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for having me, and I'm sorry I'm late.
That's all.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good presentation.
All right, does anyone, that concludes, uh, the attendees for, um, for voting. Does anybody need a break, or do you want to just go into deliberation? All right. You want a break?
Yeah, just five minutes.
All right, then I'll move that we adjourn for five minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye by aye?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, you're running away.
All right, we're back in session. I think we can do Pineberry. You're here, right? Uh, come on, while.
No.
All right, so this is number seven, 11 Pineberry Court. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
No.
Then, uh, let me make these findings. Whether undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. Um, if this is, this application is consistent with other homes in the area and there will be no change in the character of the neighborhood. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some methods feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, based upon the shape of the lot, the position of the home, there's no other method other than an area variance that can achieve the applicant's benefit. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. Um, it appears that the side lot encroachment is actually less than the, the existing garage encroachment and therefore, uh, it's not substantial. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence that there'll be any adverse, uh, physical or environmental conditions. And whether, and even though this is self-created, that's not a reason, uh, to deny the application. And I offer those findings. Christine, do you mind making a motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
I have a very excited three-year-old and a daughter and.
Good luck.
Let's see.
All right, then we'll go, um, number one has been adjourned.
Number nine is there on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Real number, real number nine?
Real number.
That's, uh, 63 Borgin Road.
63 Borgin. Ten.
All right, anybody have any concerns about this one?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment. Uh, I, I don't really see a problem with it. I know that, you know, you're, you're mentioning that the code refers to the, to the height of the top post, but if we're talking about a split rail fence, I mean, that's minimal, minimal to no impact uh, on anything. And I, and I agree with them. They are somewhat lower than the level of the road, so it's not going to affect anybody's visibility in terms of anybody driving by. I mean, I, I would be inclined to, to grant it, provided it's a, it remains a split rail fence.
So, do we, um, do we grant it to the, to the top of the post? Okay, the 54 inches.
I would just, we'll put that the top of the fence is 48 and the top of the post is 54 in the variance.
Okay.
Flip her.
All right. Anybody else?
No, I think it's a very nice-looking fence.
Uh, then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change would produce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, uh, the fence is consistent with others in the neighborhood and no change in the character of the neighborhood is expected. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. In, in order to get, for them to get the fence that they want, they need an area variance. And just, they've described, um, their purpose, their reason for getting the fence and their, um, decisions against other shorter fences. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically, it's not particularly substantial and in light of the fact that, um, it's consistent with, uh, other parts of the neighborhood, uh, I don't find it to be substantial. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there is no evidence of any physical or environmental impact. And although this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the variance. And then I would, I would offer those findings. So, Art, you want to make that?
Sure. I move, excuse me, I move that the board approve the requests for an area variance for an item nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, and just, just so that we're clear, this is based upon the applicant's application on the drawings submitted. In that case, there was a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries.
Thank you very much, chairman members of the board. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have John still on for the sign, number 11. He was good enough to help us with the keys.
Yes, he was.
All right, number 11 is 825 Main Street.
This one you have a staff report for.
And the county said this was a matter of local concern. So I, the staff report is there. Uh, and I have any problems pointing to, number three, the monument base. I think I, I agree with the staff that so long as they maintain the landscaping in front of the building, I think that obviates the need for a monument base. So, um, Phyllis, if you, if you make that motion, if you add that condition, that the applicant has to, the owner has to maintain the landscape, the landscaping.
You have to do the neck deck?
I'm sorry?
Neck deck with this?
Yeah, we gotta do the neck deck, secret.
Ah, okay. I move the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review, declare itself to be lead agency. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And I move the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of non-significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And then, now Phyllis, if you would make a motion.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 11. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered by the public hearing, results of site visits by board members and staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts the fi- oh, sorry. The board adopts the findings as set forth in the area, or in the staff report. And the approval of this variance is subject to the owner maintaining the landscape in the front of the property.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. So, the campus center. There is a staff report. And so regarding the, the pump, uh, prices, it was, notwithstanding our code, it, we seem to be kind of bound by the, uh, regulations regarding the size. So I, I don't see that that's particularly, I don't think that is problematic. But, um, the canopy. What's, does any?
I mean, it looks big, but it, it, it looks big, but then when you, when you see what's.
Right, it's, it's a 6% increase, I think, right?
So ha- it, that's still gonna look big, I think.
Um, I, eh, the, asking for forgiveness rather than permission theory of signage, I, I agree with you. However, I think the 6% is, is close enough, so. Unless, I don't have a problem with the 6% because they remove the, everything else. Okay. So. Tony?
What do we want to do here? Approve this or?
Well, I don't, what do you, what do you think?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't see it as being a significant, uh, difference in size. We're talking about the Valero sign and the canopy, right?
Right.
Yeah. And they've already eliminated the, uh, whatever, wanted the pump.
Right.
So, I mean, I would be inclined to, to give it to them, but, you know, it could go either way.
Um, yeah, when they were side by side, it wasn't, it didn't look like it was that much of a difference. Although seeing it in person makes, is different than.
They're both too big. But what do you think? Do you want to grant it, the variance, or do you think, make them come back?
And it's just.
Or make them get a new sign?
I, I, I don't know, I guess we should grant it. Like you said, in retrospect, they should have done it right in the first place, but I don't think the 6% really makes that much of a difference.
Whichever, I mean, I think, you know. And the applicant's representative agrees that it was a mistake. They, they did it without permission and it was wrong.
Yeah.
And it was clearly wrong, so. Okay, then. Tony, why don't you make a motion?
Um, this is for one and two or?
One and two. I think you rely on the.
One and two.
On the staff report. And.
Cause one is the digital, right?
Right.
And two is the variance per side.
What was the county's comment on this before?
County, I only found a county comment regarding the lighting of this one. I don't know. That's the only one I had in my old packet. Oh, and we have to do secret for this too, by the way.
All right, in that case, I move the ZBA determine this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. I further move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of non-significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Now, Tony. And it, you're gonna move to approve or, or deny?
Approve.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so we're gonna have to address the county. Okay.
Okay. I moved.
You want to split it, let me, why don't you split it? Do one, we vote on one and then vote on two.
Okay. Still, it's still staff report for one and two, though?
Yeah.
Uh, I move the board approve the request for area variance set forth in item number three, item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony by the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the finding set forth in the staff report.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion.
Are you opposed to the?
No, the pump talk was okay, nevermind, sorry.
Okay, so that's seven, zero, that passes. Now to the second part.
So I move the board approve the request, uh, for area variance set forth in item number three, item number two. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony by the applicant, testimony offered in a public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth in the staff report. So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
So passes five, two. I'm sorry?
Two nays.
Two nays.
You don't know two nays?
Yeah. I think Ken has one and a half. All right, number four has withdrawn. Number five, 24 Kinney Road. All right, so this is a variance of two feet for, for porch, for covered porch. Anybody have a problem? All right, then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be reduced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. There are other homes with front porches in the area and there's no real change in the character, and it's consistent with the neighborhood. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, based upon the size of the lot and the position of the home, no other method is available other than the area variance. And, um, it's a two-foot variance, it's not substantial, either in, um, dimensions or impact. And there are no, uh, there is no evidence of any, uh, physical or environmental impact. And although this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application. And I would offer those findings. Lyndon, do you mind making a motion?
Oh, no, I don't know. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the finding as set forth by the chair. So, so move.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Art did.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number six, 39 Hagan Drive. This is a variance for six and a half feet, but, um, it's, it encroaches no further on the sideline than the, than the original, than the house, the existing house and the original deck. So I, I think the impact is kind of minimal. Does anybody have a problem with this one? Okay, then let me offer these findings. The rear deck is consistent with the neighborhood, with neighbors in the neighborhood and there, there'll be no undesirable change in the character as foreseen because you, you, I mean, first of all, you can't see it from, from the front of the house. And based upon the topography, you really can't see it from any other area. And based upon the width and topography of the lot and position of the home, there's no other feasible method to obtain desired result other than the area variance. And, uh, since a deck extension does not intrude any further into the sideline, any farther into the sideline than, uh, than the principal house, it's not substantial. And there's no evidence of any physical or environmental impact. And although this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application. And I would offer those findings. Tony, ask.
Okay.
Right, uh, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in, uh, item number six. And, uh, decision based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered, public hearing, results of site visit by the board members. And in approving the variance, the board adopts the finding as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is number eight, nine McGrange Avenue. All right, so this is, um, just a, an application to increase the height of the building where the variances were previously approved. Uh, the applicant testified, there's, there's been no other changes. I don't see that there's any other changes. The county says it's exempt from, uh, local, or from review. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
No.
So, do you have the prior resolution? You could just adopt it with those findings. The only thing I, I should have prepared was a, um, I guess, do we, a new neck deck? Or, uh, or can we just use, reaffirm the old one?
We can, we can reaffirm the old one.
Okay.
Cause nothing's changed.
Huh?
Nothing's changed, other than...
Nothing changed. I mean, it's...
All right, then I move the ZB, ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be the lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I, I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect upon the i, environment for the reasons set forth in the prior determination.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Christine, do you mind making this motion?
Sure. Sorry, I just lost the number here. Eight, number eight, okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Technically, the findings are, are set forth in the twenty-twenty-two resolution.
Of set forth in the twenty-twenty resolution. So moved.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, then that brings us to requests for, uh, lead agency from the planning board for two thirty-one North Road, Washington Street, two oh seven Washington Street. Um, this is for a parking facility?
It is. It's a small parking lot.
And, uh, again, from the town, uh, from the planning board for Van Wagner Road Lot Line Revision and Land Contour Permit. And then, for the planning board... For Chick-fil-A. Any, any opposition to the planning board?
Everybody on the screen are ready?
Yeah. Any opposition to the planning board, lead agency on each of those items?
No.
All right, then I move that, uh, we agree that the planning board could be lead agency on those three items.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. Thank you very much. Who else going to the, uh, and so I, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries.